Northeast Hayfork, northwest Hayfork, Barker Creek Road.
Barker Valley.
Have you been there?
I haven't been to Jake's.
Oh, good, you can come with us.
I've been up to Adrian's and up in that area.
He's up there?
Adrian's.
Oh, they're in the same, I thought they're on the other side of, no.
Okay. All right, welcome to the May 7th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the pledge. Led by Supervisor Goken.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. Perfect, more rinse than me.
Just as we get started, wanted to let you know Supervisor Carpenter Harris is on her way to a NACO meeting, which is at least an eight-hour drive. So she is on her way there today. She did send information that I will share later when we do Supervisor Report Outs. And we are starting our agenda with six presentations. We are going to shift the order. Sheriff has arranged for members of his team, as well as others of law enforcement, to be here today. So we're going to do items A5 and A6 first, and then we'll move into the others. So beginning with A5, under Sheriff, adopt a proclamation of appreciation recognizing May 5th through 11th, 2024, as National Correctional Officer Week, no fiscal impact. Right one. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, recognizing the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as National Correctional Officers Week. Whereas on May 5th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan issued proclamation 5187, National Correctional Officers Week, in which he called upon officials of state and local governments and the people of the United States to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and activities to recognize the contributions of correctional officers to our nation. And whereas President Reagan was the first president to formally recognize the great work of those in this profession and the very difficult and at times dangerous nature of corrections work. He wrote that correctional officers are essential to the day-to-day operations of these institutions. Without them, it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control. And whereas correctional professionals know all too well the risks and challenges associated with the work they do, we need to take time this week to congratulate our brothers and sisters in the field for their successes in protecting the public. And whereas correctional professionals put their health, safety, and lives on the line every day to maintain public safety, to reform and rehabilitate our nation's offenders, and perform many other duties. Our highly devoted corrections personnel do more than guard offenders. They treat, counsel, train, teach, and rebuild lives. They give hope. And whereas we recommend all those who serve or have served in and throughout the corrections professional, profession this past year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as National Correctional Officers Week, duly passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024, by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Okay. The motion?
Oh, move to approve is presented.
One second.
Supervisor Frazier?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Goken?
Hi.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Hi.
Good morning, Board Chair, Tim Sacks and Sheriff. On behalf of my very dedicated and hard-working correctional staff, I'd like to thank you for recognizing their dedication to Trinity County and the service of those incarcerated here through our justice system. Unfortunately, they are very busy today and could not join us to receive this. So you have me to thank you and to receive this and accept this. Thank you very much.
Are we all gonna go get a picture taken with the sheriff?
One, two, three. Just gonna stay there.
Excuse.
All right. Okay, and item A6, under Sheriff, adopt a proclamation of appreciation recognizing May 15th, 2024, as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, recognizing May 15 as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas established by a joint resolution in Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas the brave men and women of our nation's law enforcement work long hours, often in dangerous situations, to protect the lives, liberty, and property in their communities. And whereas the safety and health of our officers must be a priority for all Americans. Every day, members of law enforcement risk their lives in service to those who have pledged to protect and defend. We must not take their devotion to duty for granted. And we must do everything in our power to ensure their physical and mental well-being. And whereas the work of law enforcement officers is essential to preserving peace in our communities and to ensuring the safety of precious lives and personal property. And whereas we solemnly acknowledge our debt to those who have lost their lives in the line of duty, these officers and their families have our prayers and unwavering gratitude. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors proclaim the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week, duly passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024, by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
Move to approve.
Second. Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Frazier?
Hi.
Supervisor Goken?
Hi.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Hi.
Chair, members of the board, Tim Sacks and Sheriff. Again, I'd like to thank you very much for recognizing the hard work and dedication of your Sheriff's Office, as well as I've invited today the Lieutenant Commander Brandon Lael of the Highway Patrol, and Marshal Garth Pedrati of the Superior Court, as well as I'd like to recognize the hard-working individuals, peace officers of the Forest Service, and Fish and Wildlife, Cal Fire, and all those other agencies that do serve in Trinity County to protect and defend the people of Trinity County, as they're here every day. So I thank you again. I have some members of my staff who are able to hear from the patrol side. And so I'd like to invite them up as well to share in this presentation. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
How they all get to go back to work? Okay, moving back to the original order. Presentations A1, Behavioral Health Services. Receive a presentation from Behavioral Health Services Deputy Director of Quality Assurance, Tori Cardellino, and Triage Manager Shauna Hanley, Hanley? Thank you, regarding the implementation of mobile crisis services, no fiscal impact.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Lutwiler, members of the board, staff and members of the public. My name is Tori Cardellino. I'm the Deputy Director of Quality Assurance with Trinity County Behavioral Health. Today I have with me Shauna Nguyen, our Triage Manager, and Catherine Legario, one of our licensed professional mental health staff. And I had a presentation, okay. All right, so we are excited at Trinity County Behavioral Health Services to roll out our Trinity County Cares Program, which is our Crisis Assistance, Response, and Engagement Services. Today, we're gonna just touch on our current team, who's here today, our current crisis response, our mobile crisis introduction, and our proposed plan. So currently today, we do provide crisis interventions to all members of the public if anybody happens to be in a mental health crisis. These crisis interventions can be conducted via phone or in person. Typically, we engage in the crisis services when they walk into the office and wish to speak with their crisis worker of the day, or at the local emergency room, because they have been brought in either by law enforcement or have walked in on their own declaring a mental health crisis. Some of the interventions that we use with our crisis folks are that we introduce some breathing skills. We de-escalate using some coping skills. And oftentimes, if they are not current clients of behavioral health, we try to get them engaged in services. What you'll see there in the, in the slide, in the pie graph, is that we had 132 crisis interventions in 2023. Ninety-eight of those, which were de-escalated outside of our agency by an agency known as WellSpace, which operates our 988 telephone. And out of those 132 crisis interventions, only 7%, which was 18, went into a full-on hospitalization status. So our crisis staff is very great, de-escalating our crises, getting them to the spot where they're not having to go visit the hospital. And typically, those who end up at the hospital are the worst of, in the worst condition. So today, keep in mind that in order to get to crisis, you either call in, you walk in, or we meet you at the local ED. However, starting on July 1st, we're gonna introduce our mobile crisis services. This is super exciting, especially in a little town like Trinity, a county, because we get to go out and we get to go work with the folks who are in crisis in their location. So we have a care team. Our team is made of our Triage Manager Shauna, our Deputy Director of Clinical Services Debbie. We have five rehab specialists, or otherwise known as case managers. We have three substance use disorder staff, counselor, our prevention specialist, and a peer support specialist, all that are within our substance use disorder team. We have five peer support specialists, and that's really awesome, because our peer support specialists have lived experiences. So they may be ones who, they have gone through the program themselves. They have had their own mental health illnesses, ailments, where they live with somebody who experiences it. So they have that firsthand knowledge of what is going on at that moment in time. I mean, we do have a LMFT who has now been continuing her education. And so now we're gonna refer to her as a licensed mental health professional. So that's the team. The team is made of two folks who will go out in the field every single time and respond. And they will have one licensed health professional that is available via telehealth, or maybe out on the ground with them. So what is mobile crisis? Our purpose is to provide rapid response, individual assessments, and community-based stabilization to Trinity County beneficiaries who are experiencing a mental health crisis. Now, this also could include a substance use crisis just the same. So we could have the opportunity to engage with those, provide Narcan if necessary, and get them kind of talked down off of their substance use crisis just the same. We will go ahead and do de-escalation, meaning that we'll work with the people to get them to maybe come from a level five down to a level three, to get them to mellow a little bit. Try to reduce any immediate risk of self, of danger to yourself or others. The hope is that we're gonna decrease our emergency room visits. We're gonna decrease our psychiatric inpatient hospitalizations. And our number one goal is to decrease law enforcement involvement when it is not a criminal activity. So people who are in crisis can get very escalated when law enforcement comes. They feel like they're in trouble. And so what we'd like to do is work hand-in-hand with law enforcement. Make sure that we can co-respond, de-escalate the clients, and let everybody go about their way. So, so far, we have completed our implementation plan, which identified our staffing. We had some stakeholder meetings. We had one in February. And then we just completed our, our second stakeholder meeting with our communities last week. We did community member meetings. We went out to Lewiston. We went out to Hayfork, and we held them here in Weaverville, and we went out to Junction City. And so our next step at this point is to receive the information back from the state regarding our implementation plan, and then prepare to go live July 1. Now, in addition to that, the team is going through six weeks of good training. So they're gonna learn how to work through some of these issues when it comes to mobile crisis. We also have our staff meeting. We have a small staff that gets together, and we implement through the processes and make our changes accordingly. So in summary, July 1, 2024, Trinity County Behavioral Health is going to roll out mobile crisis. We know we have some hurdles that we're gonna try to jump between now and then. And so once we get through that part, July 1, we'll be good to go. I do wanna just close with the idea that this is not going to take away from our current crisis response. So members of the community, if you continue to have a crisis, our walk-in crisis will always be available 24 hour, you know, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And our crisis response at the hospital will continue to be available. We're here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Questions or comments? Well, I just wanted to say thank you for all you're doing. You know, this year, we added to the strategic plan and prioritized developing a healthy community strategy. And I know we mentioned at the last stakeholders meeting, to me, this seems like a perfect part of that, because what I saw is you're bringing people together from all over the community, all different organizations, trying to work together on how can we better respond to these crises. And I think that's a perfect way to start to supplement the things we were already doing in the county to help us move in a better direction. And I know Supervisor Cox has been working behind the scenes to get you and your team in front of the other audiences that haven't been able to make it to those stakeholder meetings yet. So I'm glad to see that happening, too.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Nope, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item A2, Board of Supervisors, receive a presentation from SMART Workforce Representatives regarding updates in Trinity County, no fiscal impact.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having us. We're really excited to share with you what we have going on in Trinity County. I am Wendy Zanatelli, the CEO for SMART Workforce Center.
And I'm Heidi Miller, I'm the Workforce Community Specialist here in Trinity County.
So we're gonna, we also have a presentation this morning. We're going to give you just a tiny bit of history of SMART, but really wanted to spend the majority of our time on our current programs here and the impact here, because we have a lot going on in Trinity County that's making a big, big difference. Thank you. All right, so SMART actually began in 1979 in Shasta County. And then we added Trinity County in 2008. Trinity County had a program here before TOT, and SMART came in to assist with that program. And then we added Del, Norton, Siskiyou Counties in 2020. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. All we've ever done is focus on workforce, and we only work here in NorCal, which is important, because we understand our rural communities. The way that we're funding, funded in 19, in the 70s, a federal law called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act came out, WEOWA, and it creates billions of dollars every year to flow down to communities for workforce services. And so it goes down to the Department of Labor, over to the EDD here in California, to a workforce board called NORTEC, and then down through to SMART here in Trinity. There are 45 workforce boards in California and 58 counties. As you can see, NORTEC is a huge workforce board. 11 counties were joint powers agreement, and a very high-performing workforce board. Again, just concentrated in far in NorCal, so we really understand and conserve our community as well. So NORTEC, our workforce board, Chairman Lutwiler is actually representative on that board. And we're very excited for that. Each of the 11 counties has a board supervisor that is on the governing board. They also have 35 industry professionals that help to guide the direction of the funding. And so, and then they have three providers, as you can see, SMART covers the four counties that we already discussed. So we were located on Main Street for a very long time, next to the Nugget. And then about two years ago, we called up our friends at Shasta College, and they were very gracious to host us on campus. The, the object of workforce The, the object of workforce services like ours, you might have called them One Stops, you may call them America's Job Centers of California, AJCCs, is that we really are co-located and serve with our partners. So it's kind of that one-stop services. So we're super excited to be at the Shasta College campus and have increased our impact since being there. And then SMART Headquarters also moved. We were thirty-one years downtown and recently moved two years ago across from City Hall in Reading. So there's our beautiful new headquarters. And inside, we have collaboration spaces. We have a job center, and we've got workshop spaces. So if anybody's in the area, we have spaces for people to come work and/or to meet for free for our community partners. Just looking at the unemployment rate real quick, it was interesting during COVID, every, every historical spot in time, the North State had a higher unemployment rate than California during COVID. That flipped, and then just recently, it flipped back. So California is about five point three right now, and Trinity County actually came down a little bit at seven point one, the most recent stat. Again, just our visitors in Trinity County. Since going to Shasta College, we've been able to significantly increase our enrollments and our visitors there. Okay, so what do we do? We have many core programs through the workforce board. And adult, a dislocated worker, anybody who loses their job, can get enrolled in our services. And then a young adult program, serving eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. We also have rapid response services. So if a business goes out of business, every single one of those employees can enroll in our services, which is really important, because that can be a really scary thing. But when we come in and we say, what have you always wanted to do with your life? We can pay for you to get retraining and get you into that job. So let's take a pause and say, maybe this is an opportunity for you to go in that direction that you always wanted to. We have business services, so we reach out to businesses and help them understand their availability for things like tax credits and other things. And then something that's really important, recently, we started doing Justice Involved Programs. That's important, because when people are coming out of the justice system, they don't have a lot of services available to them. They don't qualify for unemployment insurance. And so we can actually fill that gap, get them retrained, get them back into the workforce, being productive citizens, and then also reducing recidivism. So we have four Justice Involved Grants right now. And I was talking to the sheriff this morning. We got a great referral and got somebody placed recently, and he's doing amazing here in Trinity. So on the services side of things, we have a job center. Anybody in the entire community can walk in, free services. Heidi, and now Molly, we just added another staff member, give them resume, job search, help them get through online filters when you're doing online job applications. We do mock interviewing, we do workshops, soft technical skills, and then our enrolled services. So that's for everybody in the community. And then if we actually enroll you in one of our programs, we can pay for your educational training, or we can place you on a job with a business, and we pay for your work experience. So we pay the business fifty percent to a hundred percent of wages for up to six months, sometimes longer, to offset the cost of the business while they're training. And then we have a career advisor come alongside them and make sure that they're tracking and becoming self-sufficient is the end goal of that. We can pay for supportive services, interview clothes, work clothes, transportation, childcare, housing, you name it. And then we coordinate services with other entities, all of our partners that we work with. Something important to note, a lot of people think we are similar to a job placement service, and that's actually a little bit, we're different, right? Because we can pay for all these things. But also, we're not looking to just put somebody into any job. We have very, very stringent performance metrics. So seventy-seven percent of the people that we serve have to be employed a year after we exit them. If they have measurable skills that they needed to gain, seventy-seven percent of them have to be successful. If we enroll them in a credential program to get a certificate, seventy-nine percent of them have to have graduated. Median wage standards are thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, and we have to prioritize those that are disenfranchised and veterans. These are not easy to meet, and not all organizations do meet these, but we exceed them every time. And here's just a list of our education programs, and that's not even a comprehensive list. What we do is we take a look at industry sector needs by county and even by community. And we prioritize those upward mobility-type jobs that are going to create sustainability for families and people. So a lot of the ones that we do, do a lot of class A driver's licenses, a lot of medical, fire, police, HVAC, linemen, and then teacher apprentices are a big deal right now for us here in the North State. Also, we're constantly listening to our community to say, what other needs are there that we might not know about, and let us fill that gap. And then we'll go out, find institutions that we can partner with, and pay for people's education. And then our National Dislocated Worker Grants. So anytime there's a federally declared disaster, we get funding, and usually it's in the millions of dollars. And so here in Trinity County, unfortunately, because we've had so many fires, we have the most national dislocated worker grants that we've ever had going. And we have infused millions of dollars here into Trinity County for the fires that you see listed there. Just yesterday, we had twenty people at the U.S. Forest Service enroll in this coming grant, and they are going to be going out. We pay for them, we buy tents, bear boxes. Apparently, you have to put your food in a bear box when you're out in the wilderness, so you don't get eaten by bears. And boots and all the things. We, we invest a lot of money in the gear and things that they need to be successful. We'll give them training on chainsaw certificates, OSHA training, all the things. And then we place them, they're on our payroll, on our liability, but then we place them with the Forest Service or the watershed or whoever else is doing the work to clear, clean up from these disasters. And so those organizations get the benefit of being able to level up their staffing without having to lay off after the disaster is mitigated. Also, the individuals get the opportunity to gain these skills. So they have to be five weeks unemployed and then basically be able to do the work. And so it's such an amazing opportunity for them, and we're going to talk about a success story in a minute, because a lot of these, a lot of these individuals would never have had the opportunity to be on these sites. And then, once they're able to prove themselves, a lot of the time, they're getting full-time job offers to be with the Forest Service or the city or whoever it is, and, and it just changed their life. Trinity County, two years ago, gave us their Cowworks Expanded Subsidized Employment Contract. Jesse Ferguson is amazing, and Liz Hamilton and everybody over there, and has entrusted us in working with the expanded subsidized employment. So it was our first contract like this, and Heidi figured it out. And we've, we've helped thirty-one individuals, and you can see where we've placed them. And Trinity, County of Trinity actually is taking a lot of placements right now. So same kind of a thing. Normally, these individuals wouldn't have necessarily opportunity to get that foot in the door, and it's just been amazing. We do job fairs and career expos. We actually were out at Loudoun Park on Friday, doing the college and career fair. Love hanging out with our partners and friends. And then we have just a couple of quick, you know, stories for you. This one, I love, love, love. So we were talking about the U.S. Forest Service. So last cohort, they took on just a few people. It was our first time. We actually had to change the rules at the state to help them understand how to help Trinity County. We weren't able to do mules or overnight camping or anything like that. They got to change the rules, and we piloted this here. And so one of the individuals actually made a documentary. He was just so, one of our clients, and he was just so enamored by the work. And so U.S. Forest Service created a position for him, and now he is their official storyteller. There's us buying camping gear. And then Heidi was just going to not read the screen, but just tell you a couple of her success stories with a couple of her clients.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't say enough about the work that SMART Center does. Just here locally in Trinity County, I want to commend the staff at the Health and Human Services, also Probation Department, Sheriff's Department, for kind of circling the wagon around our clientele and getting them successful in job placements. Matthew, he was one of our ESE participants. As you can see in his testimony, he thought that the program wasn't for him, and he thought it was ridiculous. Came in, we built his resume, we prepared him for an interview, and we got him placed in the subsidized employment program with the Department of Transportation, and he worked side by side with Suzie Clayton. They completely fell in love with Matthew. He fell in love with the position. He went through the hiring process and gained a permanent full-time position with the DOT. And he is so grateful for the program. He thought that that, you know, coming in the SMART Center was ridiculous. It wasn't for him, and then now he's just forever grateful for the experience that he had. Colin was a part of our National Dislocated Grant. He came to SMART Center also, just not thinking that there was anything for him up here locally in the county. He was a contractor, self-employed, twenty years, moved up after COVID hit and thought, gosh, how am I going to build a, you know, be a contractor here in Trinity County? And I said, let's take a look, let's build your resume. Had no idea how to make a resume being self-employed all those years.
Excuse me, can you use the mic? They're saying they can't hear you online.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We built Colin a resume. We worked with him in placing some applications. We actually were able to, with our grant, go to Trinity Nursery and say, hey, we have this individual that has amazing skills as a contractor. And that business, Trinity Nursery, they were blown away with being able to provide help for them, being able to help with the salaries. And again, through the hiring process, Colin was, he's still there today. And this was about a year and a half ago, and he's still there today, just so grateful for the opportunity, and same with the business. Our participant, Mark, also a Trinity County local here. He came into the SMART Center just down and out, just thought there, he was washed up. There was nothing to him left. He participated, again, we built resumes, we did online applications. We were able to place him in the national grant and down in the Whiskey Town National Park, where he helped support cleaning up the, the park down at Whiskey Town. When that project was ended for him, we were actually able to place him going through one sixty Driving Academy, where he was able to attain his class A license. He is now, after a year, successfully living his best life, traveling long haul across the United States, and again, just so grateful.
All right, well, those are just a few of the highlights. And again, we paid for all of the education and on the, on the job training for all of those individuals. And then the businesses also benefit with tax credits and other things. But there's our social. We try to put all our client stories and testimonials and great stuff that we have going on out there. So please like us, follow us, share.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
I just want to say how impressive all this is. It's such a breath of fresh air to hear these kinds of services being offered. And thank you for taking a few minutes to share the few testimonials with us. And certainly, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And I, I put you a little on this, but I didn't give you this heads-up, Wendy. But you know what I'm wondering as you're talking is, what are some of the myths that people have that you would like to kind of dispel here?
I mean, you know, the craziest thing is everybody's, not everybody. A lot of the businesses and even the clients are saying, this is too good to be true. What's, what's the catch? And, you know, it really is just funding that does benefit the economy, does benefit communities, does benefit individuals. And that's, you know, that's the beauty of the program, but there's, there's really not a catch. I mean, you have to work your program, you have to stay in contact with your career advisor. But if you're really wanting to improve your life, it's, there's really no catch. So I think that's the myth. Also, I think the other thing is that we place people in low, low-paying jobs, and that's why I was showing you the metrics. These metrics are extremely hard to, to meet. And like I said, we're, we're committed to the work, and we exceed them all the time.
Thank you. Sure.
I, I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of all of county staff for working with us. You know, we have been recipients and beneficiaries specifically to fill some county positions and just really, really appreciate the willingness to work with us in that partnership and look forward to that continuing.
Thank you, we appreciate the partnership as well.
Thank you for coming up, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, patiently waiting, A three, Clerk of the Board. Receive an update from U.S. Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest in Trinity County.
All right, good morning, Board and Chairman. Ben Sundell, Deputy District Ranger for the South Fork Management Unit and Trinity River Management Unit. And yes, I am back in my position from my time over on the Shasta McLeod Management. So glad to be back. I'm here to provide a few updates regarding work that's being accomplished by the South Fork and Trinity River Management Units here in Trinity County. So I'll quickly start with the landscape team, the Trinity WCS landscape team. They're currently working hard to oblate twenty-nine million into contracts and agreements throughout the county between the Shasta Trinity and Six Rivers National Forest. They're also looking at adding an additional one point five, one point nine million to the Good Neighbor Authority Agreement that we have with the county, with Trinity County. So they're working hard to meet those deadlines that are coming up here soon. Partnerships, our partnerships are alive and strong. Our partners are doing everything from planning to implementation across multiple project areas within Trinity County. And we're just very thankful for those strong partnerships and relationships that we have built over the last couple of years with that, with those groups. Planning, we should be close to finishing up the planning phase of Hyam Palm around mid-June. Once that is done, that planning team will take a breath and then start looking at Big Ranch in July timeframe-ish. And Big Ranch is the big thirty thousand-plus acre project between us and the Six Rivers around Burnt Ranch, Salier, in that neck of the woods. Tara and I and staff are currently working on finalizing and zeroing in our five-year program of work. We have shared the draft with the collaborative, so they've had eyes on it. Expect more sharing of that five-program of work, so we can all work together for a common picture, a common goal across the county. And the intent is to not just solely focus on one management unit and the other. We're going to bounce back and forth with our planning teams and implementation between both management units. So it's, it's an even share across the board as we still function as basically one organization on the, on the west side of the Shasta Trinity National Forest. Our timber shop is currently working with the Watershed Center to cruise and layout the timber output on the Barman Project. We're also working on the Hyam Palm project for layout of roughly five hundred acres within the plantations around Hyam Palm. Our fuels department is currently working in the Denny area, mainly along the trailheads, roads, so road brushing, tree, has a tree abatement, and then making piles, basically, so we can burn those later in the year or early next spring in two thousand and twenty-five. Lots of agreements out there between Trinity County Watershed Center and the Trinity County RCD. Moving over to prescribed fire, so far in FY twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, we're at around fourteen hundred acres, which is more than double what we've accomplished in the past for prescribed fire. And that includes understory burning and pile burning. So if you think of that, it doesn't sound like a big number, but days worked, days worked was around a hundred and fifteen days worked. And our understory burning program is starting to blossom, but the acreage is much smaller than what our pile burning acreage is. So the pile burning is tedious, it's hard work. It's every single day burning, you know, so many acres every day with, you know, between five to a hundred piles a day. So a hundred and fifteen days work, that's a good chunk of time throughout this fall and winter months that our staff have committed to, along with our agency administrators to approve those burn days for that staff to accomplish those projects. Total fuels accomplishments, which includes prescribed fire and mechanized fuels treatments, is just under four thousand acres for FY twenty-four. Total fuels accomplishments, which includes prescribed fire and mechanized fuels treatments, is just under 4,000 acres for FY '24. An exciting thing that we're starting to work on, mainly through the landscape team with their funding, is we're looking at developing agreements with our local volunteer fire departments to support and assist us in prescribed fire. And that includes pile burning and understory burning, mainly in projects that are tied to the Wildland Fire Crisis Strategy landscapes. So the first big one we're looking at is utilizing Hay Fork and High Palm Volunteer Fire Departments to help us out with the prescribed fire implementation on the High Palm project, once that gets started. So some pretty exciting things coming for the volunteer fire departments outside of normal fire suppression activities. Our fire staff are currently knee-deep, or I should say shoulder height deep, in onboarding new employees over the next few days. So that includes everything from paperwork to their fitness test, to fire refresher trainings. Projected staffing this year for this fire season, for the South Fork Management Unit, we're looking at four type-three engines, two in Hay Fork, two in Harrison Gulch, two patrols, one dozer out of Hay Fork, and then the one inter-agency hotshot crew out of Harrison Gulch. On the Trinity River Management Unit side, we're looking at five staffed type-three fire engines, two downriver between Big Bar, Burt Ranch, and Junction City, and then three on the Weaverville side, Weaverville, Mule Creek, and Coffee Creek. As we heard the Smart Center just a minute ago, our recreation program right now is in full swing. We currently have a 20-person crew on the South Fork Management Unit, opening up roads and trailheads at West Low Gap. And then they're going to start working into the Yoloboli Wilderness to open up trails and the campgrounds. A second 20-person crew is currently working up the east fork of the New River. And they'll be working their way up Pony Creek and Milk Creek Trails to open those up from blowdown and just to improve those trails and that access for the public. And then we have a 10-person crew working in the Weaverville Community Forest on trail improvement, erosion improvement and such. So we got quite a few crews out there as of today, doing some trail maintenance for the public for this upcoming summer season. Tree mortality in our campgrounds is widely known, we're aware of that. We're working hard between all staff areas to mitigate those hazard trees. So that's going to be a continuous effort as we continue to see disease and bug kill in our, in our timber around campgrounds to make it safe for the public to enjoy. Another thing, though, the recreation program is working on is throughout the summer, they'll be working on sign replacement in the wilderness areas impacted by the river complex, August Fire and Monument Fires. This also includes the installation of new kiosks at the trailheads impacted by the Monument and River Complex fires. So as you can see, the recreation shop is pretty busy already and in full swing for the summer season. Some hot topics to share with you. Tara and I and our staff will be scheduling our open houses across the Trinity River and South Fork Management Units for our local communities to attend, so keep your eyes open for those. We want to thank you for your participation in the general management view that we had a couple of weeks ago. We heard nothing but raving positive review and feedback from the GMR team from the regional office on that. So really appreciate you guys' involvement and attendance with the GMR team. On May 15th, which is next week, we have the wildfire risk reduction infrastructure team. That team is the team that oversees the funding and provides oversight to the landscape teams that have been organized. They will be in our footprint on May 15th and for a field trip. So I think the field trip is going to be a stop at WCF in Weaverville, Big Ranch, and then back over to Hay Fork, and then back down to Reading at the end of the day. So the next big field trip after that is the Joint Chiefs Visit, the first week of June, June 4th through the 6th. Tentative details on that are on the 4th, you'll be on the Six Rivers, the 5th in Hay Fork, and the 6th in Weaverville. And that coincides on June 6th, our second annual partner barbecue that we'll be hosting. So we'll have that team there, our partners, staff, employees, and possibly some other forest supervisors attending that partner barbecue on June 6th. So to summarize, recreation's in full swing. We continue with planning and implementation on our projects, working well with our partners, getting ready for fire season, and then looking forward to our fall and winter prescribed fire season as well. So with that, our staff continues to grow and happy to be here in Trinity County.
Do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you for the different things that come up from time to time, how communicative you are, how readily you receive calls, work through, you know, concerns and what have you. I just really want the public to know that you are enormously responsive and how much I appreciate that. So thank you.
And Ben, would you take just a minute to explain the, the management review process? That was new to me and I, I don't know that people really understand what that's all about and why it's important.
Yep. So the, every year, the general, general management view is made up of employees from the regional office. And they go around to a few of the 18 national forests in California yearly. And the intent is not to be like, hey, I got you, here's all the negative marks. The intent is to get a pulse from the workforce and our partners and our local communities on what's working and, you know, sharing what's working and then taking that to the regional office and then other national forests to share those experiences. And then also, what's not working? How can we improve upon that? You know, and then maybe, maybe if something's not working here, maybe it's not working at the regional office so we can, you know, figure out that path forward to make it, make it work. So the general, the general ten of a general management review is to basically have a positive interaction with employees to get a state of the pulse of the workforce and the work, and then interact with our partners and the local communities to see how well the Forest Service is engaging with those entities, just to ensure those relationships are being built.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just really impressed. I mean, that's a very intentional effort on behalf of the leadership of the organization, because there's multiple layers of leadership coming out, meaning, you know, with the teams here in place, with the partners, and truly listening. And I could see that they were very open to any feedback and, and very responsive to it. And I think that's just a very healthy culture for building continuous process improvement. I loved it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. All right, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Ben, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Sarah Acreage. I'm the District Ranger for the National Recreation Area Management Unit. Thank you for the invitation to present today. Since this is my first time presenting before this board, I will go ahead and share a little bit about the National Recreation Area and then go into some of the Trinity NRA-specific updates that I have. So the National Recreation Area being referred to is the Whiskey Town Shasta Trinity National Recreation Area. As many of you are no doubt aware, Whiskey Town is overseen by the National Park Service, whereas the Trinity and Shasta units are overseen by the Forest Service on my management unit. So for the purposes of today's update, I'll limit us to Trinity County. And I'm going to focus on some things that I've just been hearing bubble up over the last couple of months that may be of interest to the board and the public. First of all, Trinity Center Marina and the operations this summer have been a very hot topic in the community. I'm pleased to share that Cedar Stack is planning to operate the Trinity Center Marina this year. They're planning to be operational by May 23rd, so a little bit later in the season than in some previous years, but they are planning to be up near Trinity Center. They will have 25 slips available for mortgage customers, fuel sales, ice and snacks, as well as small boat rentals. So pleased to be able to work with, work with them and get them going this year. Then wanted to speak a little bit, I'm going to start with our recreation program and then move into sort of fuels, forest health stuff. The Minersville Boat Ramp is always a, a topic. So we really appreciate the great feedback we got at our public meeting in February up in Trinity Center. Currently working on some things behind the scenes with the engineering firm regarding the placement of cables and also in, in extensive conversations with the water board around the parking-related concerns that were brought up by the public. I have a meeting with them later this week, so no, nothing to share out there as of yet, but those conversations are ongoing. We have been sharing a lot of information with them about our engineering design and the results of the public meeting. So they, I believe, are pretty briefed up at this point, but we'll see how the meeting this week goes. Other boat ramps. So we, we have had some vandalism at our Bowerman Boat Ramp, unfortunately. Cables were broken and stolen. So work is going on to replace the cables there. We have ordered the cables. We do not have a timeline for their delivery. Supply chain concerns continue to be a challenge in that area, but that is in process. In the meantime, our Clark Springs Boat Ramp, Trinity Center, and Fairview Boat ramps are all open and active in the water. We've had questions about Minersville. Minersville is open, but considering that is our, our sort of dedicated low-water boat ramp, it's not going to have as much functionality in a year with high water as some of, as those three other boat ramps that I mentioned. Finally, we had some questions around Stewart's Fork. We're close to allowing the public to be able to launch there. We will be signing an underwater hazard because that boat ramp is being undercut. If folks get too far out on that undercut area, that could be a safety concern, so that will be signed. And then once water levels are high enough, folks will be able to use that. All right, those are my recreation updates. Wanted to speak briefly about the Trinity Center Airport and some requests for hazard tree removals and fuel reduction for dispensable space that we've received. So certainly heard the need to expedite that request considering the risk to their insurance. And we do plan to issue them a letter of approval for the fuels reduction and dispensable space work this month in May. So that should be going out, well, soon, very soon, perhaps even sooner than the end of the month. Additionally, our Trinity Camps project has been going on for a little while. That's about 1,500 acres of fuels reduction and forest health work, primarily focused around our Trinity NRA campgrounds, but also including some critical infrastructure and neighborhoods. So more work around the airport is authorized under the Trinity Camps project, that being the work to remove trees and improve flight paths per the FAA requirement. And then the community of Ridgeville has been requesting some support for fuels reduction near their, near their homes for a while. And that will be approved in this project as well. That is currently at our supervisor's office for review, so I expect it to be signed any day. Finally, our forthcoming Wildfire Crisis Strategy Project is the North Trinity County Wildfire Risk Reduction Project, which you may have in a previous life heard as Highway 3, that is still where it is located. It has just undergone a slight rebranding. This is about 10,000 acres of primarily fuels reduction, fuel breaks, and also area-based work around Highway 3 between Weaverville and Scott Mountain on the north side. We're also going to be including in that process some consideration of special use permits, such as driveways, water lines, airports for, for permit renewal, and then also including the fuels treatment for those permateses in this process as well, because we don't want to just look at the Forest Service piece, we want to have a broader look. We've had a number of conversations with partners and gotten their, their sort of layers and input as we were developing a preliminary proposed action, which should be out in scoping later this summer. That concludes my primary areas of updates. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
It's just fun for me how you, you read down this and so, not all of them, but so many of them, I think, yep, I asked her about that, I asked her about that, I asked her about that. And here they are, checking boxes, getting done. Sarah, thank you. Really appreciate, again, like Ben, the responsiveness and not just words, but action and outcomes. And know you're doing your best with the, the water situation and, you know, what can come of that. But you certainly have our support anytime that you need it when those kinds of comments or letters are helpful or, you know, the real-life situations to be able to communicate that. You, you know that we're teammates in all of this, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Anyone else? Yes, Sarah, as you know, the folks in my district up there, like you said, not shy, you know all about it. But I appreciate that you've always been there to answer the questions, provide facts, and, and, you know, take the heat if needed, because things don't move as fast as people want, but, but always moving it forward. And I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thanks for coming. Thanks, Ben. Okay, A4, last of our presentations, Community Development. Planning, receive an update from Consultant Mentor Harnish regarding the General Plan Update Project. No fiscal impact.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. This is Ed Presley, Deputy Director of Community Development. And I'm just here to introduce our consultant group. Brent is going to be leading the presentation this morning, so I'll turn it over to him.
Perfect, perfect. Thanks, Ed. I just want to just confirm, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Great. I just wanted to also confirm that my sharing the presentation here, or is it being shared by the clerk?
I think when you guys aren't here, it's easier if you share from your screen. That way you can control it.
One second. Confirmed, we can all see.
Yes, it's not wanting to go into presentation mode for some reason. Maybe under the slideshow menu, you might be able to start from there.
If I click through these, can you see them?
Yeah, we have had some folks say they couldn't read from the audience when it was in this mode, but if, you know, it is what it is, so.
Yeah, there's some, there's something going on there and I'm not seeing why it's not, it's not sharing it to the screen.
And if you, if you use slideshow dropdown at the top, it doesn't seem like it's changing your menu. There we go. And then play from beginning?
Okay, I'm just going to start here this for time's sake. I appreciate the board taking the time to get an update on, on the general plan. Wanted to fill you in on, on, you know, where we've been, what we've completed, and then where we're heading. I think these periodic check-ins are, are important just to make sure that the community, as well as the board and planning committees, have an understanding of where the process is heading, different touchpoints or engagement to keep an eye out for as we move forward through the different facets of this multi, multi-piece project, which has been going on since 2021. So just for those of you who might not be as up to date with the general plan, I just want to give you a quick project overview. So we initiated the project in spring 2021. Since then, there's been several engagement events, just to name a few. We had a business fair, there's been several workshops, study sessions, community plan workshops across the county. And there's also been a series of deliverables that we've also prepared. I think the largest one up to date was the preparation of the background report. The background report is in existing condition, snapshot of Trinity County. What's important about the background report is that data lines up where the policy eventually heads and the policy document in the general plan. And it also serves as the existing setting for the Environmental Impact Report, which analyzes potential impacts from any change that may arise from this general plan, looking out to the horizon here, 2050. In addition, we coordinated with In addition, we coordinated with the community members and eventually recommendation in the planning commission, and then all the way up to the board to look at a countywide vision statement and then a set of guiding principles. Those were adopted back in October of this past year. In addition, we initiated a community plan process. Our first round of workshops were concluded back in November 2022. Those were the initial stages, our testing the waters to see which, which communities were lined up to have, have community plans. And through this process, we worked with community members, the planning commission, and the board to, one, identify and confirm which communities proceed. So at this point, there are five existing community plans. And then through board action, which were three were proposed to move forward. So there's a total of eight that are being reviewed in 2020. Once we identified the community that board direction, we then needed to create boundaries. That happened last fall until December of last year. And that was based on some previous exercises where community members were able to draw their, what they believe. The foundations were for the communities. Since there's community boundaries, we haven't been solidified beyond service districts or by district. And then we worked with county staff, looking at the planning of these community plans. In addition to the general plan, we're also working with the county on updating the housing elements. So the last time the county went through this process was back in 2020, and they certified and adopted by UCD and the state. We're back in that cycle again. So the housing element is currently underway. There are some planned engagements for that happening at the end of the month. Keep an eye out for that if you have signed up through the general plan website. And then in addition, we've also picked up the conference update to the county's own code. So when you update a general plan and you work on a housing element, there's policy that has land change direction, infrastructure direction, development standards direction, that then will need to be implemented through the zoning code. So what we're starting now is just, just in the beginning of the zoning code update process, looking at and evaluation of the existing code, maybe where some areas aren't meeting current state legislation. And then we've started a series of stakeholder interviews, where you gather to do like a mutual review of the code. What works, what doesn't. So I just want to give you an update on the community plan process. That's really dominated where we've been so far in the general plan update. And this timeline lays out the different milestones that we've gone through with the county. So I had mentioned back in November of 2022, we had a first round of community workshops, ten of them, across the county, down in South County, out to Hyndpong, Downriver, Hayport, Weaverville, the Johnson City area, out to Lewiston and Burgess City, and then back up to Trinity Center. Once those were completed, we compiled a summary of all the feedback collected, which was then presented to the board, which ultimately determined which communities would be proceeding forward with a community plan. And I want to preface this, that communities that aren't moving forward the community plan still rely on the general policy that's in the overall general plan. So those communities aren't left out. All the policy that's still covered from circulation and safety and land use. Basically, that's countywide. The specific eight communities that are moving forward with their own individual community plan, they have other unique circumstances that were highlighted, and then moves forward as a board that would find additional policy direction in addition to the countywide. So back in July of 2023, so just last year, we did the second round of focus group meetings on the general plan, as well as community plan mapping exercise, that I referred to a few minutes ago, what community members were able to depict on a map what their perceived boundaries are of the community that they live in. And then from that, we came to the board in August and presented all of the findings. So all of the different drawn boundaries for all of the communities. And this took several meetings with the planning commission and the board to determine what is the most appropriate boundary for each of these communities that are aligned with the census designated place by the US Census. Does it fold in geographic, you know, local context of some of these areas, whether it's creeks, rivers, or ranges? Or does it include other services, districts, or fire districts that certain boundaries should follow? And from there, we landed on the eight, eight communities. And then in October 2023, we wrapped up that process and we gave them the go-ahead by the board to proceed with the community plan. Now, the first step, the first step in preparing the community plans, similar to what we did with the general plan with the background report, we have an existing conditions upfront. In order to prepare policy and understand a community, you have to know the local context and where the community is now, what's on the ground, what were the community vision changed with, and moving forward. So as part of that, our team created in consultation with county staff, the existing conditions portion of the community plan, so it's just a plan for the eight communities that were identified by the board. And what we did, we brought these out to the communities in our second round of community plan workshops. And these were divided into two steps. The first was held in March, the second in April. And as part of these workshops, we released the existing conditions. We asked community members ahead of time to review those, provide feedback and thoughts and opinions on the information prevented. Was it clear? Was it concise? Was there areas that we were missing? And then as part of the workshop, we also facilitated an initial exercise on gathering, gathering some information that would help create a vision statement for each, for each of these eight communities. So we have that countywide vision, but within the community plan, each community will have their own vision in addition to that. And so we started that exercise and through the two sets of community workshops that in March, March and April. Now, similar to the first community workshop set we did way back in November of 22, we're compiling the summary of, of these workshops, and it's all of the feedback that we heard. It summarizes the topics and three themes, and then for transparency purposes, verbatim comments backing in. In addition to that, we're also providing an appendix to this that includes all of the different vision statement responses that community members had by community. And what we're doing right now is compiling all of the visions and coming up with draft visions based on the feedback collected that will go out to community members this month for review and commenting as we start to narrow down a vision for each of the eight communities. Now, the workshops had great attendance, had all eight of them over, over the last two months. And there were some key themes that definitely came out from these workshops, and they're listed here on the screen. There was a discussion on expanded communities. So when we bring the existing conditions forward, community members, in some communities felt that the history section was a little light, needed some updating or some additional information. We have notes on that, and we've been coordinating with the county staff to include more historical data where necessary. There was also specific questions as it related to the implementation of different topics that the community plans would cover policy-wise. You have the big ones, cannabis, recreation, and then coordination with other agencies, both state and federal. And that really got down to the discussion of land. There was also the discussion for the need for additional infrastructure improvements in the county. This could be roadway infrastructure or services. And in several communities, there was several members which brought up the idea that the boundaries should include additional parcels. So the boundary should be expanded upon what the board approved, what called last year. Now, at this point, at this point, there's no recommendation moving forward to the board to modify the boundaries. It would take a planning commission recommendation and then the board decision to make those changes. We're in the middle of preparing the process right now, and we're thick of the fortunes and the visioning. So that is after discretion of the board, but I just want you to be aware of what some of your constituents are mentioning, that some parcels they thought were left out in other areas, and it was important just to highlight that. And then lastly, team members just wanted more transparency in the public process, and I'll get into that in the next steps. We're all outlining some of the upcoming engagement that goes a bit further out than we've been typically presenting. And this is just to make the community members more aware of other engagement techniques that they can jump into the process. Beyond the historical aspect, there were other areas where community members felt that the existing conditions needed some tweaks, some modifications. We've been tracking that with, with the county staff, who's been the great assistance with that. And we're currently working on that, on that course, like updating the existing conditions data in some areas of the region. But that's an overview of where the general plan is heading, and I'll jump now to the next step. So I think this is what everyone is really adhering towards and was in for. So the next steps, as, as part of the overall process, which includes the general plan, the housing element, and his own. So we have a zoning seminar. This is a meeting open to the public. It's a, it's a special board meeting, the planning commission will be in attendance. We invite the public to join in, whether in person, on Zoom. This session will also be recorded. This is one of the first engagement pieces that's taking place as part of the zoning code. And the zoning seminar is not so much what the zoning code is going to change or affect with Trinity County, it's more of an educational crash course per se. So not everybody is familiar with how zoning works, with what zoning plan will be, and better yet, what zoning will not be. And so this zoning seminar is almost like an educational touchpoint where our team will be providing the presentation that walks through what a zoning code is, how do you update a zoning code, for instance, the county, what are the different components that go into updating it? What's new state legislation that's affecting zoning? And then how do you proceed with getting the final product? So we invite everybody to join in on this. I think it's a great opportunity to become more familiar with the zoning code. And when the zoning code goes public, the community and decision-makers will have a better idea with reviewing the code, the better understanding of how it works and operates through this. The general plan policy document, just about done. So the general plan policy document currently is making its way through a tax review, such as a technical advisory committee, designated by department heads. It'll then make its way through a focus group review and then go out for public review. So right now, we're targeting early July, coming June, so this coming summer, the general plan will be out for public review and deployment. So that's going to be all of the different elements, the land zone, circulation zone, safety element, and so forth. So keep an eye out for that. If you've signed up on the website, you'll be notified when those are out. There'll be links to each of those. They'll be on the county page. They'll be on the community county general plan page. There'll be a lot to review of that. Back to the zoning code. Also in July, we're looking to facilitate the first community workshops. These workshops will be held in two locations in the county. They'll be held in Weaverville and in Hayport. These are focused on the initial community issues and opportunities identification as it relates to zoning and development standards. And this is important to get community feedback at the beginning before we actually start drafting code pieces later in the summer. So keep an eye out for that. The dates have not been determined, but the month will be July. Both of the workshops will be back-to-back minutes on the zoning code. Moving into August, so once the public review draft, general plan is out, we're going to have workshops on the public review draft general plan policy document, where we'll present key policies and themes from each of the different elements. Similar to zoning, those will be held in two locations, Weaverville and Hayport. So they're slated for August, this coming August. And in addition to that, there will be a planning commission study session where we will roll out the different elements and take questions from the planning commission. There's no action at that meeting. And there will be a board session as well. We're going to roll out that as well, through some comments and discussion. So August is going to be very busy, myself, that you're at. Moving into September, we are going to facilitate the third round, and this is the final round of community plan workshops. So in September, we'll actually bring the complete community plan to each of the eight identified communities. The existing condition section will be updated per community feedback and information county staff. There'll be a vision by that point, so we'll roll the vision out to the communities later this month for feedback and commenting. And then the policy direction will be included in these community plans that will end September. Now, I did get some questions earlier from community members asking, why are we waiting all the way to September for this community plan workshops? And the reason is, is we need the general plan policy document to stop moving. We need it in a public review draft form to make sure that future policy within the community plan is consistent with the overall county budget. So the countywide general plan is getting released in July, and the study sessions in August. So for the community plan, we'll, we'll follow that. We want to make sure that there's no, that there's number one consistency, but there's no duplicative policies in between the countywide and to the community. Now, the last bullet here, this gets down to the EIR. So once you release a public review draft, a general plan, you can initiate the EIR process, which then handles that generally. So expect that to get started in the summer, I would say mid to late summer. We'll, we'll start the EIR. The EIR can take anywhere from nine to 11 months to prepare. So we're really looking at spring of next year to where we would actually see a public review draft environment impact report out for the public to review, provide comments, as well outside of the agency wants to review the fact. I can tell the board, we are still on tap for late spring, early summer adoption next year. So holding on tight, there'll be more engagement that, that comes, that comes in the spring of next year. But this just gives you a, a general roadmap of, of where we're rounding out. That concludes my presentation. Michael or myself are available for information to the board.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
Yes, go ahead.
I have, I have two. Hi, Brent. First one is quick, under next steps, item four, facilitate the general plan workshops. Just the way it reads, and I wasn't clear, are those the board and commission study sessions joint or independent?
I apologize if it wasn't clear. They're, they're, they're independent. They're, it's not.
Okay, I think you were clear. I thought that was what you said. It was just confirming. So, well done. And then back to, and I know you said there's no recommendation from your team to the board at this time, but is there anything that you could say about the ability or wisdom of backing up to reconsider boundaries to include more parcels than necessity of that? Or like, what would we, what would be the perhaps unintended consequences if we did or did not do that?
Well, so, I mean, unintended consequences is it helps the community plan process as it, as it stands. We have to go back and redo the boundaries. The existing condition sections would have to get redone. And just for process and procedural, in order to move that forward, it should go back to the planning commission for a recommendation and approval of the boundaries as it did the first time. So by a planning commission meeting, and then we need to go back to the board. Some of the, some of the areas that we're looking at some change was the, was the Lewiston plan, the Hayport plan. And then there was discussion of, of, of why there isn't a plan in South County. Now, there is history about why there's not a plan in South County. There was a board recommended action to not do that based on, based on the feedback from, from, from the community members, based on participation. And that was an intentional decision during the board adopting. But I, I mean, it would, it would stall the process.
Yeah, yeah, understood. And I suppose at any point, we make decisions. We may look back over our shoulder and wonder if we should have pivoted slightly or what have you. But at some point, you're going to make a decision.
And may I make a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Because, you know, Supervisor Cox asked about intended or unintended consequences. And when I was trying to think through this before, when it came up in the Lewiston meeting, I thought, okay, so whether you are within the boundaries set right now... Okay, so whether you are within the boundaries set right now, you are welcome to attend these community meetings and provide your input. Whether you are inside or outside those boundaries. Doesn't directly affect. How you're impacted, other than if that community plan does come up with something that is. Particularly unique from the larger county plan, then you would not be included in that. The zoning and other things and policies for your parcel might be just outside that boundary. That would be. Where the, the, the person might feel like they were missing out on something if they weren't within those lines. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. So you, you are right. And. Some individuals felt like there were other protections that were being included within a community plan boundaries or identity. And that, you know, their parcel, parcel of parcels, they're just right on the rippling. But it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily mean that, that you can't participate in, in, in the meeting. Every parcel is still covered under the current, like, general plan.
Which is exactly what I was thinking from the standpoint that you could look at it as you just stated, somebody may feel as though they lacked inclusion. But I think to Supervisor Fraser's point, not to misquote you, if I, if I do, you can correct me. But if you're inside that, you can actually look at it as greater restrictions potentially as well.
Yeah, it goes both ways.
Brent, thank you very much. I, I did enjoy our zoning interview last week. I have a couple of questions here. One of them was, I've had a lot of input from my constituents. And I think at least one or two of them probably got hold of you with some of their, their questions. What would be the proper time or meeting to address those issues?
From a zoning related perspective?
Yeah, I think you probably just got a two or three page questionnaire from one of my constituents.
Yes, yes. And that had, that had to do, that had to do with, I believe with the.
Say it one more time.
That had to do with the Hayfork plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so county staff has a, county staff has, has a, has a copy of that letter. We're coordinating with them on edits and modifications based on, based on that. And we've had, actually, we've been sensible with that individual walking through some of the comments and concerns about the plan. And potentially boundaries.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had a few dates correct here. So the Hayfork Housing Community Workshop is on Thursday, May 30th at five thirty.
I believe so, but I can double check.
One more time?
I can double check that.
That's correct. Yes, that is correct.
I know it's in Hayfork, is it at the fairgrounds, I'm assuming?
That's what we're securing today.
Say that again, Bill.
Yes, it's proposed to be at the fairgrounds. That's what staff is working on securing today. So I can't say that independently, but that's what we're trying to secure.
And then we have the housing zoning seminar on the twenty third. Is that a morning? Nine AM, kind of similar to the board meetings that we have?
That'll be a, a joint special meeting with the planning commission.
That's a special meeting in this room, nine AM. It's a zoning. Workshop, not housing.
Okay, is that the one that's inclusive of the planning commission also?
Yes.
Are they invited or is it somewhat mandatory?
Everybody's just invited.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Brent, just for me, I just wanted to check in on, on. The timing and process for notifying people of the next round of meetings. I think, you know, we did have a little bit of feedback at one time. One aspect of it was trying to plan around planning commission meetings. And I know it's always tough to schedule around every single thing that's going on in the county. But I would ask that for both planning commission and board meetings, that those be prioritized as things to work around. Since this process is so key to those two groups. And the other piece that came up was the. Amount of timing allowed so that, for instance, it couldn't be in the newspaper and, and so forth. So I, I would just like to better understand your. Plans and expectations for how much advance notice do you plan to provide? And what means are you planning to communicate for these next rounds of meetings?
Sure. So I can start then, and county staff may want to come in there as well. So for the next round of community meetings, the housing elements notification is going to go out. Either today or tomorrow through, including the blast. The zoning seminar is going out today or tomorrow. There'll be hard copy flyers that'll get posted. It'll go on the Facebook page. There'll be a blast that goes out and there will also be. A notification in the newspaper that'll go out as well. Typically, we do about a month lead time for, for events like this. We've been asked by, by county staff to extend that, and that's why today what we've done is. We started to show some of, some of the engagement going out further. So when we get into the busy summer season, we want to ensure that meeting members have ample time to plan to attend these things, since they are pivotal. We're getting down to, you know, some of the bigger pieces of, of public review. So we're currently working with county staff to actually solidify dates for everything on that next steps. So there will be hard dates coming out and we'll post all of those on the website. We can even do blast with all of those, you know, repeatedly post those on Facebook. So everyone is aware of when they are and they can plan around them accordingly.
Thank you. One, one request I would make is there are. Five or six. Facebook groups that represent different parts of the county. One of them alone has ten thousand followers. And so I would ask if someone could, once you post it on your Facebook page, if someone could go in and share that to those groups. I know that when I send out updates, when I post it to all those groups. Usually the tracking shows me that between a thousand and fourteen hundred people have viewed that. And that's some much broader reach than is somebody paying attention to what goes on my particular page or your particular page. But really reaching out to those audience and meeting them where they already are, that I think that would be helpful.
If I could, Rick, if, if you could send me a list of those five groups, that would help a lot because we've got two. And I didn't know about the other ones in other communities.
Sure, I will. And I, and I'm sure my list is incomplete, but I will, I will send what I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And a big thing which is exciting to me at least is that we now have a Facebook, so please follow it. And Minter Harnish is also managing that as, as well as myself. So we're trying to get the word out on, on these types of events and other agency partner events.
Thank you. Yes, I, I will say, I mean, the, the site is great, your comment form is great, your emails out to people if they subscribe. I know that there is a lot of effort and I think, as you mentioned, this is just so important and we're getting down to the last pieces that. The more that we can do to maximize community involvement would be the best. Supervisor Fraser, did you have anything? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Was, was the clerk able to take this thing back? My, it's my computer's.
We were just going to watch what you do for work for today. I tell you, while we're working through that, before we move into the next section, why don't we take a.
Are you ready for us, Ashley? Okay, welcome back. We will move on to public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Hello, Board, Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Nick Goulet. I'm the co-executive director at the Watershed Center in Hayfork. I wanted to talk with you about two items. One you have before you on the board agenda later today and another one that I'm hoping will be before you at your next meeting on the 21st.
So I had to pause. So if it is on the agenda, then you have to wait for public comment on that consent calendar. If it's not on the agenda, this is the time.
Okay. I can't talk about, I can't stay for that, so I'll just let you all address that when it comes up. The item for what I'm hoping you'll see next board meeting will be a resolution to accept the NEPA compliance for a project we've been working on for over five years now. So I wanted to give you a little background on that. The Watershed Center has been taking some leadership. We've been working with our colleagues here, Pacific Forest Trust, Michael Comstock. I'll talk with you later on in public comment here, trying to acquire community-owned forest land in Trinity County. So as we've been watching trends in forest land ownership, forest land conditions, we've been recognizing that as industrial and large timberland owners move out, the probable outcomes for those timberlands is going to be they either go into federal ownership. Generally feel that we've got a lot of that already in Trinity County and don't need more, or they're going to cycle into generally international ownership as an investment vehicle. I believe that Trinity County citizens can do a better job of taking care of our forest lands, and so we're standing up a community land trust that'll own and operate those timberlands as working forests, recreational assets, and community assets into the future in perpetuity. Part of that is conservation easements that lock in that good land management in perpetuity. That's where Pacific Forest Trust sort of comes in as the easement holder. So next meeting, you should be seeing a resolution. The county ends up having a role in this transaction with the Trinity Headwaters, 11,000 acres of forest lands. That'll be our first acquisition. Representative Huffman, with a lot of work from Pacific Forest Trust ourselves and other allies, put some money in from the federal budget into this land acquisition. That funding requires a NEPA determination to move ahead, and the county has been working on that. And so I understand that's sort of an awkward sort of arrangement for the county to sort of be in this position. I think it's very unique that Representative Huffman was being able to come in with that money. There's a lot of other state money contingent upon that federal money. And so you all are going to have a decision to make at the next board meeting that allows this all to move ahead. There's some really time-critical elements with the state budget that tie to the federal money. And so I'm just hoping you all will take that under consideration. You have the opportunity to vote on it at your February 25th, excuse me, your May 21st board meeting. Thanks.
Thanks. And Nick, while you're here, I did check in because you've been here for almost two hours while we had six different presentations. We will waive the limit. And so if you want to comment on the consent calendar item before you have to leave, you can go ahead and have another three minutes for that.
I appreciate that. So that item, the watershed center working to really be an ally with the county and standing up our capabilities to take on, take ownership and responsibility for natural resources, has been working with you all and with staff over the last several years. We were really instrumental in helping to get the Good Neighbor Authority agreement stood up. Another key piece of the strategy was to get a Natural Resources Division and some staffing stood up. We made a commitment over a year ago now to try to bring some money into that position, to help fund that position, recognizing it'd be tough for the county to staff, to fund that staff position. We really didn't live up to our commitments and our promises in the first year of that, and I think that put a real impact on the county budget. I know our plan and our commitment to have David Kolbeck essentially serve in a leadership position on environmental planning for federal projects and projects on private lands, so NEPA and CEQA compliance. It was our intent, and we made a little progress in the last year over that, but we're really ready and prepared to ramp up now. There were some, I won't go into all the details. It was just some real complexity in sort of getting him blended in with the existing projects. A whole generation of projects going forward where he's going to come in on the ground floor, got a solid budget secured and obligated for that work. We had a great meeting with David about three weeks ago, going through in detail exactly what we're doing, over what timeframes. Of course, pending some, you know, some changes to the scheduling, but really confident in that funding and the work that's ahead. So you'll be looking at the consent calendar here, an item to approve a contract with us where we can, we can move money and work together more integrally. So we're really looking forward to working with the Natural Resource Division. Appreciate the county supporting that position and David's work there. And so expecting more good work in the year to come. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just walk up? All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Comstock, and as Nick just said, I work with the Pacific Forest Trust, and we are the entity that has partnered with the WRTC for the acquisition of this very special project. It's over 10,000 acres land that is here kind of checkerboarded with public land. And my role specifically is the transaction manager. So I'm responsible for all of the contracts that get signed, including from all of our funders, as well as all the parties here involved. And you may know that we're purchasing this property, or rather, the WRTC is purchasing this property from New Forests. And our organization, the Pacific Forest Trust, is going to manage the easement on this project. So the reason Nick and I are both here today to talk about this is because this five years in the making project is scheduled to close in May come June. We have three funding mechanisms for this: Wildlife Conservation Board, Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and the last one is kind of an odd one for conservation, but it's the Housing and Urban Development, which is the only federal funds. And this is the NEPA clearance that we're asking for. The reason this is so important is because all of the other funding mechanisms are in place. Everything is set to close on this project minus this one clearance. And specifically, we are waiting to get, we're hoping to get special exemption status from the State Historic Preservation Organization, because there would be no real impacts to any of the historical artifacts or building on the property. And so we're hoping to get an exemption as soon as this week, no later than the May 15th, is what we have been heard. And once that is clear, the funds can be released, and we will be set to close May come June. Maybe by the time July 4th rolls around, it'll be WRTC's property. So that is why I asked, that's why I came here today, to just stress to you the importance and say that this is literally the only thing that has to get completely resolved in order for us to be able to close and give this wonderful property here to Nick and his team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment online?
Veronica. Good morning, Veronica Kelly Albe's, Weaverville, Douglas City, Parks and Rec. I wanted to take a moment and just keep you up to date on some of the things that have been happening around town, so to speak. Parks and Rec's district has been very fortunate to partner with some amazing groups and individuals throughout the eight years that I've been here. Recently, we've been able to partner with Anna Carson on her little learning spaces and had the opportunity to go out to Hayfork and Burnt Ranch and hand out free life jackets to the community, youth and adults as well. We've got an adult volleyball league going on. Let's go, Rick. I've participated in the local, or the recent economic development meetings and had great conversations. The Weaverville Chamber is moving in a shaker, and I've become more active with them on behalf of the Parks and Rec, and look forward to all the things that are going to come through them. Trinity Arts Council and Weaverville, Douglas City, Parks and Rec are hoping to partner with a grant very soon to bring back some additional things to Weaverville specifically, but there may be other opportunities. And I bring this to you today, and I encourage other members of the communities throughout Trinity County to attend these meetings, either in person or on Zoom, and just let you know what's going on in these corners of our town. We all work together, we see each other, but sometimes we don't know what one or the other is doing. And the opportunities for partnerships and participation is there, and we look forward as Parks and Recs to do that with whomever we can, whenever we can. We are the Weaverville, Douglas City, Parks and Rec. However, I believe and have always believed that reaching beyond our particular borders, so to speak, has proven to be very beneficial, not just for our organization, but for those we serve through our organization. And I have yet to find somebody that hasn't wanted to get together and just do great things. And we need that here. And there are great stories to be heard throughout this county. Every community has something, and I encourage everybody to come and let you know what's happening. I'd like to know what's going on in areas that maybe I don't visit that often, and what opportunities and opportunities for partnerships could be out there. Because one thing that we know in Trinity County, that when we do it together, it's bigger, it's better, and it's better. So I encourage everyone to do that. I just want to give you a little peek at what's been going on and say thank you for our partnership with the county, and all of your staff have been amazing, and we appreciate all of them. And Ashley, thank you for getting me up to speed on your new agenda. I really appreciated that. So thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
I have no other reasons.
Thank you. CAO, I did want to mention the piece that Nick was commenting on that was not on the agenda. That is the one that I had reached out to you earlier about that. And as you heard today, that I think we were close to getting on the agenda but didn't quite make it, but now we're literally, we'll be done two days before the deadline. So I just want to make sure that, at least from my input, that that be prioritized to make sure that it's absolutely ready for board consideration on that meeting.
Yeah, it will be as soon as we get the actual documents from.
Oh, you need them from someone else? Okay. Okay.
We're working all the details.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving into reports and announcements, we will start with department heads.
Liz.
Hi, good morning, Chair and members of the board. I'm actually wanting to yield my time to Skylar Fisher. She's present with you today to give a quick overview and update on our Hazard Mitigation Plan efforts with Office of Emergency Services.
Go ahead, Skylar.
Hello, Skylar Fisher. I coordinate the Trinity County Fire Safe Council with Trinity County RCD. Thank you, Liz, for turning over your time to me so I can talk about some exciting progress on hazard mitigation planning efforts for the county that RCD and the Fire Safe Council has been working on with the County Office of Emergency Services. So the long-awaited public review period for the Trinity County Hazard Mitigation Plan has begun on May 1st, so last Wednesday, and included in that is a draft also of the first-of-its-kind Trinity County evacuation plan. So we're really excited to get public input from residents and organizations who are interested in reviewing and commenting on these documents. So not only are they available on the firesafetrinity.org website and soon to be on the Trinity County OES website, but they're also located at 11 different spots physically across the county. And so those binders are located at here, at the Weaverville Library behind the counter, at the Trinity County RCD office, at the Golden Age Center, at the Planning Division Office, at the Trinity Center Library, at the Hayfork Library, at the Roderick Senior Center, at the Southern Trinity Joint School, at the Ruth Community Church, at the Xenia School, which is crazy, the geographic differences of this county, it's very large, at the Burnt Ranch Elementary School. So if you aren't interested in reviewing online, they are available at those locations for your review with my contact information on how to submit a comment on that. In addition, online, there are proposed evacuation routes for the county. So those are used for planning purposes and understanding what routes are particularly at risk. So at this point, we're at the pre-hazard risk analysis, because we want to make sure that we get community input on the routes first so that we can hone them down, and then we can go in and do the vulnerability assessment on it. But if you don't want to review them online, we're going to be having a round of community meetings starting tonight at the Burnt Ranch Elementary School, where we're going to have information on the County Hazard Mitigation Plan update, on the draft evacuation plan, on the proposed evacuation routes, and also on the 2025 Trinity County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So a lot of hazard mitigation planning efforts happening right now. At those meetings, there is going to be blown-up versions of the evacuation routes. So folks interested in attending can take a look, see if it reflects reality. We, the Fire Safe Council was at the Burnt Ranch Volunteer Fire Company over the weekend for their open house, which was a lot of fun. But we were able to do the first in this season of map drawing exercises and receive a lot of great input from residents on, you know, is this what your evacuation route looks like? But also for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, you know, where are those community priority areas for wildfire resilience projects? So roadside shaded fuel breaks, defensible space, that sort of thing. So tonight's meeting at the Burnt Ranch School at 6:00 PM is the first in a series of 11 community meetings that we're going to be hosting over the next two months. So in May, we're going to start in Burnt Ranch. Next week, we're going to be at Lewiston, the Community Center, at 6:00 PM on May 14th, that Tuesday. On that Thursday, we're going to travel down to High and Palm, also at 6:00 PM at the High and Palm Community Hall. The following week, that Monday, May 20th, we're going to be at the Trinity Center VFD at 6:00 PM. The next day, May 21st, we're going to be at the Mad River Community Hall at 6:00 PM. And then we're going to wrap up the May meetings at the Douglas City VFD on May 28th at 6:00 PM. So those aren't the only ones. We're going to have more community meetings in Coffee Creek, Hawkins Bar, Weaverville, Post Mountain, Junction City in June, but we're going to get through May 1st. And if if community meetings aren't your speed, but you're interested in engaging in the process, this Saturday, we're going to have a Firewise Fair at the Hayfork Park, and there's going to be a booth dedicated to these hazard mitigation planning processes. We're going to have maps available for residents to draw on, and we want to receive input. So that's going to be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Hayfork Park next to the elementary school. It's going to be a lot of fun, live music, but also hazard mitigation planning efforts, and other organizations are going to be attending too. So the public review period is May 1st through July 1st, and we want it to be as accessible and open door as possible. So we encourage everybody to comment and review. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the effort that's going on, and that's a lot of outreach and engagement and much needed. Thank you.
I have no other reason.
Okay. You did a great job, Liz. Okay, report from CAO.
All right. Thank you, Chair. I got a few items. So since the last meeting, we submitted the second draft for the Central Valley Project Reconsultation Environmental Impact Statement. Interested party comments. They're very similar to the initial comments we submitted. Those were due on the 17th of April, and then we had an interested party on the 18th of April. And we're basically reiterating our desire to have a separate EIS for the Trinity River Division aspect of the overall CVP. It appears the Bureau of Recreation is going in a different direction and will issue a separate biological opinion for the Trinity River Division, which will then become part of the overall Central Valley Project Environmental Impact Statement and potentially a new or updated recorded decision at the end of this overall process. So there was lots of people on, lots of interest in this, not just the county, but the project is moving forward, and Bay Delta Office of the U.S. Bureau of Recreation is leading the effort. Next topic is our Public Defender RFP is out on the street as of the 30th of April, and proposals are due on the 21st of May. We've been working with the Office of State Public Defender, and they will be participating in the evaluation interview and new contract award process. And the new contract is scheduled to be awarded and effective by July 1st. Let's see. Payroll for April was successful after our fiscal system upgrade that have been kind of given the board updates at various meetings, and it's a big step in the right direction, so we can fully utilize all the capabilities of that system. Our next big push is for time card and employee online modules. The budget process for FY 2425, I know everybody is anxiously awaiting that process and is very excited, but it has officially started. The initial budget documents are due from departments on May 24th. So when you see department fiscal staff or admin fiscal staff around, give them a little thank you in advance for what we're going to be doing over the next few months. Today's agenda is the first time we have used Civic Clerk, and we are so far very happy with the product. That falls under the parent company of Civic Plus, which you may have also heard in different forums. The agenda and board information is found at the same location on the county website. We have sent emails to all those currently signed up to get the agenda reminder explaining the new process that they need to follow up to re-sign up to get the agenda notifications. We were not able to transport or transfer those that were already signed up in Novus over to Civic Clerk, so everybody will have to go in and re-sign up. But that information has gone out to everybody that is signed up. It's very easy. We verified it with a few different users. It takes less than a minute. And then any new people that want to sign up, there's a little button that says sign in on the top right-hand corner of the webpage, and it literally just takes, you know, less than a minute to sign up, and you will get those email notifications when agenda or agenda documents have been posted. And that is all I've got for the board. Any questions?
Thank you. It's great to hear that all those kind of like feature sets that you're taking advantage of in a staged process are going well.
Starting to make a little progress.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
With the biological opinion coming out separate from the Trinity River Division and Sacramento River, I have concerns that they probably should come out in tandem. Is there any chance that that may happen? I don't think so, but maybe you know more than I.
From what I've heard from the last Trinity River Trinity Interested, or Trinity River Division Interested Parties Meeting, and then the previous WIN Act Quarterly Update from the Bay Delta Office, their plans right now are to do them separately. They do not line up. That does not make sense from various, or from a certain aspect. But they are marching forward with the overall CVP project to try to get done on a schedule by the end of this calendar year, which is admitted admittedly from them, very aggressive. But that's the schedule they're going after. If they don't meet that, then maybe those two would come closer to marrying up. But that's, that's where the Bureau was heading right now.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to updates. Supervisor Cox.
Okay. Since our last board meeting, I also, along with other board members, I'm sure participated in the zoning interview conducted by our general plan update team. I attended for out of county travel, I did tend the CSAC Annual Conference. And you know, Supervisor Lou Wiler will have all kinds of details to share about the meeting per se. But as far as my participation in that, it's so valuable for your relationship with other supervisors. And I was, I did receive an invitation to participate in an interview there. CSAC has contracted with a I don't know, public relations team, probably best way to put it, to create a video where that ends up landing, I'm still actually unclear. But I got to express Trinity County needs, requests. And, you know, just that moment of what would you want to say about your county? And so that was a fun opportunity to be able to share with folks what's great here. And so it'll be interesting to see that all come together. The general, I was probably one of the last people to be interviewed and the interviewer did share with me, yep, I'm hearing the same things. And fire insurance was certainly high and emboldened on that list. I was at the NorCal Annual Conference. And that's another one of those opportunities, not only to, as a board member, so I represent this board on that board, that executive board. And so that was a great opportunity to recognize some of our emergency workers that have done some enormously heroic things in their line of duty. So it was a delight to be there and be a part of that. Also a good opportunity to hear from presenters about things that are going on. So there is a particular service that may be of interest to us in upcoming months. So I have shared that with our OES Director Philip Simi, and he's looking into the possibilities for that. So potentially more on that to come. I would love to share with this board that the new executive director that the first five commission has hired is fully on board. She's doing marvelously and it's very exciting to see some really positive things picking up and moving forward under her leadership. Regarding PSA 2, as the Chair of that Board, it is my duty to be one who interviews with Kevin Kern, who is from the California Department on Aging. So that provides feedback as to my observations and interactions with the executive director of that board. And post-meeting, he was able to share with me that he's only received really positive feedback. And our audits have gone very, very well. And so that board is healthy. Good to know. I participated with Supervisor Lou Wiler in the Forest Service Listening Session that been described today in his report to us from the Forest Service. We got an opportunity to visit personally, along with Sheriff Saxon, with the Regional Forester Jennifer Everlin. And I was very impressed with how very open and receptive she was, really quite humble toward the suggestions that we brought up. Discussions that we had regarding incident management teams and then the, the the suggestion that I made really picks up where Supervisor Frazier tried to make some headway oh, a year or so ago with Congressman Huffman, with the request that nationally, there is consideration for a limited time period for a NEPA exemption post-fire. So that we can effectively get timber off the land before it just becomes coal and unusable. And there's some healthy timber there, you know, could we have a more expedient process by which that could take place? And I also connected with our RCRC representative when I was at the CSAC meeting, asking for the same attention. And so I think maybe a little bit of traction might be in place there. We'll see in days to come. Served for a short period in the LAFCO meeting. And that's all right. I do see that probably even as the alternate, it might be good if I just calendared those meetings and showed up anyway. And perhaps an initiative being brought forward might alleviate those issues in the future. So that would be good as well. Was at the Community Economic Development Workshop. I'm sure Supervisor Lou Wiler will speak to that, but some good conversations came from there. Also was at the Mobile Crisis Unit Stakeholder Meeting that we heard about in presentation this morning. That was productive, just in the ability to make some connections for folks to be included in those conversations and kind of coordinate some pre-launch communications that will be needed and hopefully really helpful to folks. I was delighted to be able to observe Supervisors Carpenter Harris and Goken in their North Coast Resource Partnership Meeting. And so it was, it helps me to be in the room and see those things in real time. What you folks do and the things that are available to us from those partnerships. So I want to thank you both, Heidi in her absence here, but Supervisor Goken for that, I didn't understand how that works. Seven counties, government, tribal entities coming together. And there is an awful lot of, I guess the word power is coming to mind, but it doesn't encapsulate what I'm trying to say. There's so much potential there when those relationships are strong. And the good things that have happened. It was a wonderful time to see projects encapsulated in review and those things that are on the docket to be looked at going forward. So thank you for that. I was delighted to have lunch at the Golden Age Center and see the incredible things that go on there. And I do want to share those out. The list is far too long, but just to encapsulate, the services that they provide are far, far greater than one would kind of envision. The transportation services, the meals they provide, the work that's being done on the building itself, the roof, the painting, the collaborative stakeholders that are making that place. Not only a return to the vibrancy that it was, but our superior, I think, than anything I've known about in the past. So I really want to thank Dave Albes and Annie Nugent, the Activities Director, Dave is the Board President, and all the folks that are involved with that. Thank you for what you bring to not just our seniors, but our community generally through that. Also was delighted to attend the Weaverville Fire Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. And in, in those moments, you do dig in deeper to what these folks provide in safety and assistance to those on their worst day in our community. And as the public may or may not be aware, every time an ambulance is dispatched, the Weaverville Fire, some form of fire, CAL FIRE fills in as well, are required by law to be dispatched with them for lift assistance, et cetera. And the number of calls that they respond to in a year and the services that they provide are exceptional. And not only is it something that we are humbled to receive, but something that those folks really should be elevated to the pride that we have in them in not just what they provide, but the way they provide it. So I want to thank them publicly. And delighted to be working with the new energy and initiatives being put forward by our Weaverville Chamber. Some exciting things on the horizon there. So it's been a busy few weeks and I believe that encapsulates it. So end of report.
Great. Supervisor Goken.
All right. So we'll start with the NCRP, North Coast Resource Partnership that myself and Heidi attended. And I also saw Supervisor Cox and Lou Wiler there. And Jill is right, there is, it's a great group of people. There is a million pieces of that puzzle that we are are trying to put together. I think it has about 15 or 20 supervisors that attended and probably 40 or 50 people in the audience that are participating. It's a great, great group of people. They're doing some, some wonderful things. They're very good at getting grant money. And it's one of the better committees that I'm on. They were also, interestingly enough, very, very high on the Veterans Hall. We generally have these meetings at a modern Indian casino. And they thought the down home kind of Veterans Hall thing was, was pretty nice. They did a good job there. The food was great. Chelsea did a great job with that. Looking forward to the next ones, myself and Heidi, and Heidi should take, although she's not here, the majority of the credit for this. But she did a great job putting it together. The county did a great job presenting it. Everybody was happy and looking forward to nuts. One. And also through this same North Coast Resource Partnership Group, myself and Heidi are on a anti-cannabis or legal cannabis cleanup ad hoc that is starting to take shape right now. And we're trying to figure out how much money we may need to start some of these cleanups here. We also, as I said earlier, we have the Firewise Fair at the Hayfork Park this Saturday from 10 to 1: which should be hopefully well-attended. I also went to the Science Symposium put on by TRP on the 30th, first and second. I was there virtually and in person. They did a very good job presenting their, their science. They have good scientists there. It was well-attended, I thought. And I think that they will probably, I don't think they've done one in two or three, four years now, but I think they should probably do those annually just to keep the public up to date and to see what type of work they're, they're doing.
That was which group?
That was Trinity River Restoration Program, put on a Science Symposium at the Performing Arts Center on the 30th, first and second. And it went well. I was, I was impressed with, with what they do there and the scientists that, that worked for them. What else do we have here? I did have another town hall meeting, which was nicely attended by 30 or 40 people. It's a, it's an open forum. I sit here and they sit there and they ask me anything they want and I give them the answer that I think is right, no matter what. So it goes pretty well. It's been pretty civil for Hayfork. I do have everybody check their guns at the door, just in case it gets out of control a little bit. And that, that way I know I'm the only person in the room with a gun. So I feel good about that. On another kind of a lighter note, Clara Cox, who is a senior basketball player at Trinity High, was voted to the All-State Team, which is only the third person in Trinity County history to be voted to All-State, which is a huge honor for such a small school like Trinity High. It's, it's unbelievable. There's been two, one other woman and another guy that has made All-State, and that is at three in the entirety of Trinity County High School. So it's a huge, huge achievement for her and her family. So I just wanted to make sure that that was mentioned today. It's, it's a big thing for her and I'm glad she got it. I think that may be everything that I have here.
Supervisor Frazier.
All right. I'll start out, out of county travel. I had a special meeting for North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District on Monday, 29th of April. We had to have a public hearing to move the budget forward for that organization. The initial budget looks like a shortfall of nearly $200,000 that will be made up for out of contingency. So we're not the only ones that have budget issues. Other than that, we'll go back. I did, I had a Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting. That once again was, we barely made a quorum. Then it does look like we have a new board member coming on, on that board, which will make it a lot nicer. We were down to three. And everybody had to be there. So, but there are going to be some changes in that board, it looks like, due to state legislation. So that, that's going to be interesting to, to keep that board functional. I also had a Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, which leave on the consent agenda, the outcome of that meeting. And then on the 30th, LAFCO, which once again, we adopted a budget that has a shortfall and is going to be made up out of contingency. So other than that, not a lot to report.
LAFCO. Not our contingency. It's LAFCO's contingency budget.
Okay. On behalf of Supervisor Carpenter Harris, she sent something over for me to share. We hosted and had a great turnout for the North Coast Resource Partnership Meeting. I'd like to thank the panel for bringing the alarming information forward regarding the egregious negative impacts to the environment, society, water quality, wildlife, domestic animals, and human beings by the illegal cannabis grows in Trinity County and the Greater North State. The representatives from the counties and tribes had a robust conversation on the matter and intend to move forward with the efforts to clean up these sites through collaboration and combined effort. I attended a meeting with several landowners and Supervisor Bushnell from Humboldt County to the Rail to Trail Project. It is proposed that roughly 10 miles of the old train track will be converted to trail in southwestern Trinity County. To my knowledge, no one from the Rail to Trail Team has contacted Trinity County to discuss this matter or provided contact information to attend meetings or provide us with information on this project. I was able to obtain contact information and have reached out to the contacts asking for information regarding the conversion. A petition has been generated by the local tribal peoples in the area stating the proposed route along the rail line will further expose their ancient villages' sites to traffic and degradation. I will be working directly with CAO Tethil and Supervisor Frazier to provide a letter within the public comment period once we have had a chance to fully review the proposal. Locally, the folks in the Burnt Ranch area are still struggling to solve the power surge damage done to their home appliances. PG&E is working on setting up a pop-up to help folks file their claims, no date set yet. Frontier continues to fail in the provision of landline services as per several citizens' report of no phone service and complaints regarding delayed response when USA DIG has been called for landwork. And I can forward that to Clerk of the Board for distribution to the folks since I read that very quickly. Okay. My update. So as has been mentioned previously, the Trinity County Community Development Corporation held a community development workshop in Weaverville. It had 40 to 50 people in attendance, including representatives from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, SCED, our Economic Development Organization in the region, SPI, and more. It was great to see people showing up, not only within the county, but outside of the county to support our efforts. but outside of the county to support our efforts. Another workshop is scheduled on May twenty-second at the Roderick Senior Center in Hayfork. This was based on a number of requests that we bring it the same kind of opportunity out, a little bit farther out into the county. So we will hold that second, the TCDC Board, sorry, I'm too bored roles I'm referring to there, will be hosting that meeting on the twenty-second. California Jobs First participated in the Steering Committee meeting. This is a group that helps to plan the processes that are followed then by the subcommittees. And I wanted to let people know the portal for submitting ideas is now closed. That was extended multiple times, but the final date was April thirtieth. I hope that people did take the opportunity to submit their ideas. And the state continues to, I would call it throw curveballs, you know, sort of late in the game. They keep raising their hand and saying, we have more input that now needs to be considered in your process. But regardless, we anticipate making funding decisions within the next sixty, ninety days. And again, this funding is based on the planning and preparation side of things, not the implementation. The implementation funds will be next year. Also mentioned, the Regional Forest Service General Management Public Workshop participated, as, as mentioned, with Supervisor Cox and Sheriff providing feedback. And again, I commented on it earlier. It was just, I'm, I'm just impressed that that is such a standard process for that organization because it's truly a best practice that I just haven't seen very often. A general plans zoning stakeholder interview. That was an interesting thing. A lot of that is, is frankly very new to me, but you know, I can tell we have a a somewhat heavy lift with a lot of unclassified lands and things like that that have to be addressed. So I look forward to the session that we have coming up on May twenty-third where we'll, you know, all get maybe zoning one oh one or maybe two oh one. I don't know. The CSAC Legislative Conference and Board Meeting. It is several days in Sacramento, but Supervisor Cox mentioned, there's a lot of valuable information. You can meet a lot of people who either have gone or are going through similar things and learn from how they're affecting them. And one of the things I, I think I take away most is there are some really good discussion and presentations about legislation that is either pending, proposed, recently put in place that is designed to help all the supervisors in attendance come away with the information they need to take action. And there was one session that was, I think, quite stark in, in that as they were presenting what that legislation could mean. It was really concerning and that will be on the November election and, and CSAC was definitely in opposition to that. And, and I may have more details on that later. The North Coast Resource Partnership joined board members for the dinner the evening before. It was good to see the folks that I had met with the one time that I represented the county for that organization and then attended the board meeting as a member of the public. It, it was great to see all that discussion and especially the piece on the ad hoc committee and the work being done about cleanup of illegal cannabis sites. And one of the things I think that just speaks of the impressiveness of that organization. It was in April of last year that I attended the board meeting on our behalf. That came up as an idea in that meeting. And here they are a year later and they have had multiple meetings of that ad hoc committee. They brought together people to present information so that they can get more detailed about how they react to it. Our, Christie did a great job presenting information and examples that I think frankly shocked a lot of people that were in the room that haven't been exposed to that before. And it was just great. And, and again, it speaks to the commitment that these people have to actually doing something. You know, we're not just talking about things. Let's do something about it. So I think it's great. Participated, really just listened in on a hearing for California homeowners insurance market. It's a Little Hoover Commission. It was the second session. You can, you can hear these, watch these if you want. They're several hours long, but a lot of different perspectives being shared about what's going on with and what needs to happen. I thought what was most interesting is that multiple people commented on, why isn't the insurance commissioner one of the people presenting? And there had been outreach and there was no response. I don't know what the reasons why, but there was some really good feedback provided. Career Fair, I stopped by towards the end of that and it was great to see so many people represented there. They said they had a pretty good turnout. I was almost at the end, so things that were already winding down, but it was neat to see all that. And I, and when I talked to some of the folks, whether it was visiting my alma mater at the Marine Corps booth or our county folks or others, Forest Service watershed, all branches of the military, smart. It, it was, it was a great representation and they said they had a good turnout. And then the Mobile Crisis Stakeholders Session that was presented before, we heard earlier. I just wanted to say I'm impressed with the really strong planning, coordination, collaboration that's going on there. It was, I don't know, twenty-five people in the room, another probably five or so on Zoom and everyone's very engaged in trying to make sure this is a success. Okay. Reports from ad hoc on cannabis. I don't have anything else. CAO Tuthil, I know we have a meeting coming up soon. I think the next step was staff was to get to Supervisor Frazier and I, the, their first round draft, and then we were going to comment on that. So perhaps we'll follow up on that later. And tribal relations. I know Heidi's not here. So I guess we don't have an update. That was her item. All right.
One question on the economic development, the Roderick Center on twenty-second. What time is that?
Five thirty PM to seven thirty PM.
Thank you.
And that, basically there'll be a brief meeting of everyone there and then it will break up into four groups. One will work on housing, one will work on economic and workforce development, one will work on tourism development, and the final will work on marketing. So people can choose any one of those four work, small group breakouts and we'll be publishing information that we got from the two of those afterwards. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? None in the room?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Did anybody have an item that they wanted to pull for discussion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion and second.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Item one, community development, building, waive the reading of and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section fifteen point two five pertaining, pertaining to limited density rural dwellings introduced on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Fiscal impact unknown, approximately two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for an initial study plus unknown cost from planning consulting.
Good morning, Board and Chair. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Bella Headkey, Trinity County Planning, Senior Planner. So this ordinance for limited density rural dwellings is coming back to you guys for a second first reading due to the substantial change that was made by the board on March nineteenth to add the Ruth Lake CSD SUD to the zoning list of allowed zoning districts. So, you know, I gave a pretty lengthy staff report that described the findings of my research after that meeting. But in short, in order to justify the sequel exemption, staff had to locate the Ruth Lake CSD SUD guidelines. And as a result of that effort, staff discovered that while the rezon from unclassified to SUD was complete in two thousand and one, the guideline development was delayed until two thousand and ten and that project was never finished. So we technically do not have written and formally approved guidelines for the Ruth Lake CSD SUD. And the CSD has been notified and we've begun conversations with them to remedy this. So, given that staff's recommendation is, in order to fulfill the original purpose of this amendment to decrease the allowed parcel size, staff recommends that the board removes the addition of the Ruth Lake CSD SUD as an allowed zone. And the board directs staff to bring this amendment back for a second reading at a later date in order to complete this existing pending amendment. And then the board, we also recommend that the board direct staff to complete P ten fifteen, which is the planning project that was started in two thousand and ten in order to complete the SUD guidelines. Because the ramifications of this really is that building permits and director's use permits cannot be approved until those guidelines exist. And if the board desires, you could direct staff to bring a new amendment back at a later date to include the Ruth Lake CSD SUD under allowed uses, once we finish that guideline, those guidelines. And to be clear, the guidelines, as they are written in the original ordinance amendment that rezoned unclassified to SUD says that those need to be approved at the planning commission level. And I'm here if you have any questions. And Cody is also online. And council has reviewed all of this content. Thank you.
Questions from board members?
Oh, one question if council, if I could. Is there any potential that this could save some time if the board were to approve it? Could it be approved contingent for Ruth Lake contingent upon the completion of those guidelines?
Yes, it could. That would be appropriate. I believe the discussions we've had with planning is, is a recommendation, just move forward with the commitment that we will get those resolved. It, it is an issue of enforcement. If we don't have these regulations, we haven't, we can't really figure out what, how to enforce them, but it doesn't mean we can't have the ordinance in place, ready to go when they're ready, when the, the local rules are ready. Okay.
I would add that I would be concerned about the sequel exemption because that's the major nexus that's happening in this situation. So I don't Margaret, would, do you think it would be appropriate to adopt that not without knowing what the guidelines are? Because we're going to need to do an initial study for the guidelines.
Okay, okay. If we're going to do an initial study, then you're correct. Yeah, then we're going to need to, we'll need to hold off. Okay, understood.
And just to add, it's in the report, but just for contextual purposes, an initial study is only being required because the original rezon delayed those guidelines. So those guidelines were never, the impact of them were never reviewed in the original two thousand and one rezon. So the project in two thousand and ten already started initial studies, so we have to follow that path.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open to public comment. No one's in the room, so we'll go online.
I have no raised hands.
All right. Entertain a motion.
I'm trying to figure out, there's a way I can shorten this up somewhat. How about I move to approve the department recommendations?
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion?
The only thing that I would say is I would like to try to speed this timeline along as quickly as possible because the people in the Ruth Lake CSD SUD have been trying to rebuild since two thousand and twenty. And now we keep finding other areas of deficiency at the county level that makes it harder and harder for them to do that. And if we can't issue any building permits or director's use permits in that area because their zoning is not complete, that has essentially has the ability to stop rebuilding for a whole other year. If we don't have that done before the short summer season is over, everybody loses another year. So time is of the essence.
What is a, what is a normal timeline for that?
So due to like circulation requirements with the initial study, I proceeded taking a minimum of two months, unfortunately, but we will make it a priority and the department does understand the effects of the information that we found. So a minimum of two months is what I'm gearing up for. I'm going to try to get it to the planning commission as soon as we can and use our consultants who have been getting through things fairly quickly because they've staffed up as well. So hopefully we can get an initial study ready and prepared. My, my first strategy is to adopt the the policy handbook that we've been using for this type of approval, just copy and paste it, different format. Let's start there. We already have something that we're all familiar with and we'll move it through the process. I'm not looking to change anything. Just correct what wasn't finished before.
Cody has raised his hand.
I'd also say what staff could do on our end to maybe help along would be that any building summits that we do get, we could still have them reviewed to save some of that time so that when this does, or if this does get approved, then we can issue them quicker so that we're not waiting on the backend. So we can, we can find ways to kind of help out while we're going through the other parts of it.
Thanks, sir.
Great.
Thank you, both of you.
All right, so we have a motion and seconds.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler.
Aye.
Thank you, Bella and Cody. Item two, community development, cannabis, waive the reading of and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section seventeen point four three point zero nine zero pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation, general plan update fees, no impact to the general fund.
Morning Chair, Supervisors. This is Ed Presley, Deputy Director of Community Development. This item was brought to you on April sixteenth and it went through. That was the first reading. And so this one is just to conduct a second reading and then enact. If you have any questions, let me know. And Drew's online as well.
Any questions? Any online public comment?
No comment.
All right, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve E two as stated.
This, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler.
Aye. Thanks for all your work on all this. Okay, item three, human resources. Adopt a resolution regarding the disposition of paid time off of employees who become elected officials. Unknown potential savings to the general fund. We're expecting Leila?
Yeah.
Do you see her online? No. Did you want to take it?
I can take it. So this proposed resolution is really some just some cleanup and to make sure that the, the guidance is clear when and if a employee moves from a, a county employed position to a elected official position. It doesn't happen that often, but it, it does happen. It just currently happened with the auditor. It's happened with a few of our other current elected officials and we're just trying to make it clear when that employee's time, if you will, vacation and that kind of stuff will be paid out. So it's not held in longevity and continues to occur. And continues to occur and then paid out usually at a, at a much higher rate, uh, as they're more uh senior in their career. So this resolution uh cleans that up. It, it makes it clear when the, the employees will be paid. Uh, and it captures all the previous employees uh that are in this current gray area.
Any questions?
Uh, the only question I had was I, I, I assume that what I read there about the, the amount. Which was staggering to me, that we allowed to be carried forward and, and paid for. Uh, is all part of the labor negotiations that we get involved in at times and it is part of those agreements that are in place. Yeah, okay, I'll just. State for the record, from corporate America, I've never seen anything coming within ten percent of that amount. So when we talk about ways that the county could save money. Having a more fiscally responsible set of, you know, policies, but I understand that that's a. Probably hard fought um benefit that has been agreed to, so we are where we are. And I appreciate the efforts to at least make sure we're clear on how this gets handled, when do you, how and when do you calculate the amount? What happens if they come back? All those kind of aspects. I thought it was great, um, that the way it was laid out. Thank you.
Well, entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, I would move to approve item E three as presented.
Little second.
Any comment or discussion? All right.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler.
Aye.
Okay, uh, closed session readout from our last uh regular meeting. Uh, what I have, um, please check with me, C A O and County Council on five point one, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point five C. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Uh, significant exposure to litigation, number of cases, one, proposition twenty-six. The board gave direction to staff. The county conducted an audit under proposition twenty-six in conjunction with litigation, and at this time, there are no violations within the cannabis program. The board is directing the C A O to come back to the board with proposals to conduct periodic proposition twenty-six audits. Five point two, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point five E, Public Employee Appointment, County Council, Direction Given to Staff. Uh, subsequent to that, there has been a press release. Uh, absent anything else, we will move towards close. Session. And we have two items. F one, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point five F, Labor Negotiations. Counties Designated Representatives, Leila Cassis, Margaret Long, and Susie Hawkins. Employee Organizations, uh, General Unit. And F two, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point five E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. Do we have any public comment online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, we will move into closed session.